Good morning, everyone. We're continuing our meeting from last week in our usual Monday morning sessions, December 21st. So, the calendar corresponds.
The calendar for this week is pretty full. It's going into Christmas. There is a transit meeting today at 1:00 and it's regarding their 2016 budget. And then the rest of the week is just board meeting tomorrow and then we'll be getting our office repainted over the holidays.
Are there carpet and stuff too?
Yes. Pretty much everything in your office.
Yeah, because I think you got new carpet.
You got new carpet this last year.
In correspondence, we did get notification from Benjinis Irrigation District there. They presented their budget projection for the year 2016. We received correspondence from Jonathan Veskey, an attorney, who was regarding the public defender issues. And we received correspondence from Larry and Campbell concerning some law enforcement and arrest issues.
There's a lengthy area of file with Larry. Yep.
Gary Dizik was given a tape recording from Larry. Unfortunately, he left the tape.
With years, his claims have been investigated. There is, so, yes, I've had news.
Pursued, but yes. Start a conversation to this. Yeah, we are in receipt of a letter from the Island County Board of Commissioners asking for any kind of input that we might have to them by the 31st. And spent some time over the weekend kind of putting together a letter for myself and I thought we would use that to discuss the issue here. Just going to see if the board wants to respond as a board to the Island County Commissioners or if, as our usual course is, we want to just go ahead, as we choose, write our individual responses to the Island County Board before the 1st of, or the 31st of December, I think that's what they asked for there, for whatever input, or January 1st, sorry, for whatever input they have. So, just thought I'd open up the discussion and see if there's sentiment in favor of doing a letter from the board if we can just give it to us about these issues.
So, the gist of it is being able to retain a special attorney and they're being challenged. They've decided to do that, but they're being challenged for that decision.
I don't know the particulars of the case. It's going on in Island County. Mark Nichols and I have had an email exchange and Mark has some thoughts that he would like to share with us, but he's unable to be here in person this morning.
Hasn't said.
Surgeorized and everything.
Waited on it all till we talk to Mark. Right. I think it strikes me over the years that periodically counties, you know, they're in a difficult situation, you know, elected officials, and they want all the other counties to rush to their support. Traditionally, I have to stay out of the county's issues. But I think if Mark has an issue that he wants to bring forward to discuss, if he's as persistent as that in some way to harm us, then he can bring it forward. But, yeah. We've had a great relationship with our prosecutors over the years. Traditionally, they have worked with the board, spent some time, or necessary outside counsel, or come to the judges, and worked through that process and want to weigh in on anything that will make that process. But if Mark can go since I look, there's some questions in here, we should wait and have to do. I think it's.
Yeah. I'm not interested. Mark didn't know that he was going to ask Brian to come with him and here I see Brian's here.
But before we go too much further, this would have to be noted up on the agenda. The prosecutor wants to bring it forward. I just don't have any conversation about it today without it being noted up. That's how, it's just not the government. I don't think so, you may know this though.
So, is it okay for tomorrow if we were to, you can't notify for tomorrow?
Do what you want. It's obviously not going to, this is our last work session of the year. We, there would be no point according to Island in responding if, as a board, after today, or after, you know, depending on how you want to do it. I do not know whether Mark had objections or additional points. I couldn't tell from his emails. Like I said, he had hoped that there could be a work session that we could talk about and indicated that he would ask Brian to come and represent him if the board was interested. But once again, now we're getting into procedural. It's not noted up and we can't talk about it. This is a big, this would be precedent setting to weigh in on another county's business. I mean, without noting, this isn't just normal correspondence. No disrespect to Brian, but unless you want to call an emergency executive session or something, I don't see how we can have this conversation today.
I'll defer to Mark if he would like to put it up. That's not, the prosecutor obviously had an objection.
Any way to proceed, and it's our usual course as a matter of fact, is for us as individuals to respond as we choose or not choose to the Island County letter. And so, I'd love to have a conversation, Brian, with you. Everybody knows what I've put down in writing in drafts so far, but I certainly would love to, you know, be advised by Mark's office through you or through Mark personally. You know, I know he's recovering from surgery right now, so he can't be here with us. But, you know, I've got some personal thoughts on this as you're seeing expressed here. So, I think an alternative course of action is just to simply have us three individually decide to respond or not respond and do it as individual commissioners. Because obviously, we're not going to be able to answer if we choose Island County by their desire deadline because we're out of time this year.
For all fairness, I saw the letter stated December 2nd. I've had it for weeks. I haven't been interested in putting it on the agenda, so I guess pretty much where I read it, discarded it. That's where I'm at. If somebody had wanted to put it on the agenda, we would have had all of December. And Mark, I assume that your office has seen it, so. What's difficult about these things is it's been around the office for weeks now.
This particular letter has.
Okay, it was in my office weeks ago, early December.
In which letter are we speaking about this?
Why am I asking this for, to weigh in on their lawsuit?
Completely bizarre.
Yeah. Well, just so everyone is, you know, with all candor to this body here, we are playing catch-up in the sense of the letter that you have drafted. You know, what we can say first and foremost is this dispute that's sitting in Island County is very, very contentious between the prosecuting attorney's office as well as the board of county commissioners. And this is a matter that's going to be playing out in court of law as well as court of public opinion. And this might be one of those disputes that's best left served to Island County and not weighed into these waters if you don't need to for just, you know, general optics. What we can say in just a cursory review of the letter drafted by the, what appears to be drafted by the Island County Board of Commissioners as well as the pleadings that are filed in this case, it does appear that the county commissioners have misstated the position of the prosecuting attorney's office and I just tell you that the Island County prosecuting attorney is not saying there's an absolute prohibition because there's a contention of outside counsel, but that there is a procedural check on the execution of that power, that the, you know, running through the prosecutor's office is simply an indication to first ask them to that the question, is there a disability, a conflict, or some other ethical reason why the matter should first go out? I mean, if you were to play this matter out from a position that polishes the perspective, you know, if there is no disability, no conflict, no ethical reason why the prosecuting attorney's office can't first, you know, discharge that function as the, you know, public's, you know, selected legal advisor to the county, if the legislative body is able to do an run around that for whatever reason, they don't like the advice and they pay private counsel at, you know, premium billing rates, that could be, you know, in a way, you know, disenfranchising the public voters, rating the public, you know, the county's treasure in the life. And that might not be the best, you know, political or, you know, policy outcome to be advocating for. I know that in this county, at least under the present administration, with this board as well as the prosecuting attorney's office, you know, we try to come to you gentlemen when we believe we're conflicted out this ethical prohibition on this from being able to advise in some circumstance. And we will continue to do that in coming to this board in the future and discuss these issues. But what this really is in Island County is more of a political dispute between bodies. It's not anything that I think the public views favorably and it might just be best to maybe well end up a little. It's going to be a good teaching lesson and the courts are going to weigh in on this. And I imagine it's going to go all the way up and it's going to have the kind of a teaching moment for the other 30 counties. At this point, to jump in, which, you know, in having reviewed the pleadings, the request from the legislative body in Island County seems to be misstating the position of the parties involved, it might be best at this time to, you know, sit on the sidelines, at least at this particular judge.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the reason I, in my thinking, and as you see expressed, I've not gotten into the innards of the case. I want to keep focused on the public policy that underlays the statutory scheme of the relationship between, at least in my thinking, the prosecuting attorney on the one hand and the board of commissioners on the other. So, that's the reason I don't really care to know the particulars of the case. That's not the important thing to me. So, I would love to consider this further, but I think we're just out of time to have it as an action of the board.
Yeah.
And I fully recognize what you're saying.
Yeah. Just in however this fighting is decided to move forward, if you are going to be writing a letter on this, it would be good to understand the particulars of the case so that your letter is at least hitting its mark.
Yeah. Will we be dragged in to the court proceedings with one commissioner's letter?
I can't imagine that that would be, I mean, it wouldn't be a pronouncement from the collective body. I imagine that it might be used to the extent that one side believes it's helpful to them, but, you know, it's not going to be the collective voice of this body. That's assuming that there's just one.
One commissioner cannot bind anything.
No, and you can end up being deposed and elbowed and somehow your store burns in Clough County.
But it doesn't make us, I just can't party to the suit.
I'd ask, I'd just make respectful requests in my way of under your last action in Vegas and.
I'll consider that, Mike.
Please don't do that because it's just going to be dragging us into something that is not in the county's best interest and then you're somehow tying us to a lawsuit as your last act of commission.
I don't think so, but I will consider your opinion and views.
But I do think for those that are watching us today, that it's important to remember that at least the Clough County Prosecuting Attorney's Office will continue to work closely with the Clough County Board of County Commissioners.
Which is disappointing to hear that a commissioner has been weighing in on another county's business when the longstanding tradition has been, we've had a wonderful relationship. We've never been acrossroads with the prosecuting attorney's office and honestly, I'm disappointed to hear you do think you should weigh in on another county's business and in dispute. When you sat here for four years and have a wonderful relationship with a county.
Well, I know, of course I have. And so, but I know one price, John, and she would not, and the board of, I don't know the other two commissioners, but I know Helen would not undertake such a letter lightly.
Well, I don't know these people. I know, I know our people and I know the relationship that I have with our prosecuting attorney's office for 15 years. We've never been at loggerheads. We've never gone outside and gone around them. I've never even remotely considered that. So, you seem to think that somehow that would be a good thing. As your last act, I'm asking, stand down on this one. Don't bind the county to future lawsuits. You're not going to be here to help defend it because I don't see how you're not going to be dragged in. And then are you representing Clough County or are you just representing yourself?
How is that? Is this going to get WASC involved? Is there a subcommittee with the Justice Commission?
I don't know. If it goes, if it goes beyond the trial court, the court appeals, that's the time when WASC has the appeals from the Supreme Court law. That's when WASC, according to its bylaws, considers whether or not to weigh in on this amicus. So, we're not, we're not at that stage right now.
Well, that's what's kind of taking its timeframe, so it sounds like maybe six months from now, WASC.
Yeah, I don't know the, I, I've just, our office has just done a very cursory review of the pleadings and I think the pleadings were filed, at least the one round of briefing was filed as late as Tuesday. I don't know when it's set for hearing. I don't know what kind of type of challenge it's going to be working on, but I think usually six, eight months is a good measure as to when the appellate body might be able to step in. There are various groups filing amicus right now. I know that the Washington Association of Prosecuting Attorneys is preparing a briefing in this matter.
So, what I'm thinking, Mike, is this will come up, I think, six months from now and with more information with WASC weighing in on it and that might be the appropriate time to keep discussing the issue. I don't know.
Appropriate time for the prosecutor, for me to, is your appropriate time? Or is this sort of the issue? You know, the prosecutor would like, I know that Mark does wish that he was here for his surgery and this is the type of issue that at least in-house, you know, to the extent that we want to know how we're doing and where we are and then, you know, what is the propriety in terms of commenting on in other jurisdictions, you know, essentially probably first and foremost a political dispute before you really get into the legal merits. You know, Mark would prefer to have that opportunity with you gentlemen. But, you know, that's it.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
I will try to get a hold of him, Mark. Mark been in for his meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, exercise is dangerous. Basketball, that.
It's a long direction.
Bad for it.
Hard.
Thank you, Brian. Anything else on correspondence?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay. Agreement with Washington State Patrol for the National Criminal History Program.
Come on up.
I'm here, Cindy Hanson, hello, Cindy Hanson, our General Services, fill in the beat. It's a grant to replace the laptops and it would be more efficient if somebody can run.
Cool. Comments?
We're going to go on that and we'll do the most change form in January.
It'll be 2B for, thank you.
Nobody has to come in from you tomorrow.
Thank you.
You got other stuff. Recommendation for contracted services in response to requests for proposals for chemical dependency for health, public health services. Good morning, June.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is, I'm Don Lawley. I'm one of the members of the clinical and the seasonal health advisory, providing, representing the hospital districts, the schools and the financial hospital districts. As you've been already provided, you have a summary of 2016 contract services recommendation that comes out to a total of $585,811. Part of those are continued contracts from last year to, and one contract for organizational schools for health provider for elementary schools was approved just recently at 12/7. So, what we're left with is it's those counts of 33,198 and here you have a summary of each of those allocations regarding. One thing you may notice, if you had a chance to review this, of each of those direct services are RFP, some of those requested awards have been reduced and you would feel with a separate figure. Part of that is based upon looking back over the last year or two of what has been allocated and what they've actually built. We've seen that sometimes there's a disparity between those numbers, so to increase amounts available for the other programs, we've reduced some of those to reflect more of what they actually build. So, that's why you see the difference in numbers there.
So, the executive committee from the AHO, there was a conversation about which organizations and at what level would be funded for 2016 and we decided with all of the change that we're dealing with on that particular, the combination of those two funding sources, that we would continue funding from 2015, you know, the same pool of applicants. And it sounds like all you get is proportion relative to what they have received. Are there new players on this proposal that were not?
And new players sort of, healthy families submitted a proposal for this procurement and they have not to, City Medical Health Department fund before, but they are, you know, longtime funding source for homelessness. Yeah. And also the same is to Northern, Northern, like the Regional Veterans Housing Network. So, in other words, they're really realizing that even though they're housing services entities, they're also behavioral health services program serving rural populations. So, they are, it's also an interesting point, Bill, because as the VHO comes into existence, we'll really be able to see, I think that the VHO sees itself as primarily Medicaid funder of behavioral health services, but historically, DBHR has paid for services for low-income clients, especially special populations like pregnant women and IV drug users that are not on Medicaid and also need voluntary commitment services, domestic patient services. So, there can be a lot of things that the VHO will have to kind of look at its budget and say, we know we're required to fund Medicaid population. What are we going to do about all these other services? Do we have the money to do it? And if the determination is that they don't, that could come until our growth. So, there could be a real close association between the two funding sources, working together to make sure that the needs are met.
I appreciate what's happening is the process for allocating funds has about become very complicated. And the executive committee said, it's complicated enough, let us make sure we have in place advisory committees, some agreements, et cetera. And so, for the most part, in 2016, let's stick with what we did in 2015.
Right. And talk, there seemed really to be kind of a safety net. All three counties have passed the 1% sales case, so it can be a safety net if there ends up being just holes that the VHO just can't fill.
And this is just a heads up for you, nothing really to do today other than ask any questions you might have. They'll prepare the, all the individual contracts and bring those back after the first of the year for your formal.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you, June. Nice work as always. Thanks for your service to this committee.
Oh, yes. A little bit of a drive-in for us. It's certainly worth the consideration. I'm, I actually feel honored to be working with so many of these folks.
Thank you, too. Appreciate that. Amendment one with Clough Public Defender extending contract to December 31st, 2016 and decreasing funding.
Yes, included in your package is the actual amendment number one to the existing personal services agreement we have with Clough Public Defender as you asked me to do. Harry and I got together and hammered this out and increased the funding to the amount of money that was in the budget. And we're looking for, as we suggested we would, it is a one-year contract and basically it's a, it's an extension. It's a one-year extension of the existing contract with the change in the amount of money to $1,140 plus. The, whatever the amount is of the grant coming from the city, they, they thought it was going to be somewhere between $13,000 and $13,500. So, that is the totality. Harry's office has agreed and through the scope of work to pick up all the additional work that we are now responsible for in district court and I think it's a very good extension.
Okay. Questions, comments?
So, just to look at the numbers. I thought you had an additional $40,000 that you put in the budget for this one?
Over the 2015 amount totally, yes.
And then the $13,000, how does that play in?
That is the additional monies that are going to come. We get a, SWIM doesn't apply, but City of Port Angeles and Clough County apply to the Office of Public Defense each year for a grant to help offset the cost of engine public defense based on the previous year's data. Well, so, Port Angeles applied for the 2016 grant based on their work in 2015 and we applied ourselves as well. Well, Port Angeles, in the agreement, the intermodal agreement that we had with them, as they recognized that when this grant comes in, even though it was, the application was based on 2015 work and some 2014 work, they recognized that the money was to be used for 2016 offsetting of expense. So, they, in the intermodal agreement, agreed to pass through to us the amount of the grant within our, that they received. In our existing personal services agreement with Clough Public Defender and has been every year since I've been here, we have agreed to pass through to them whatever, whatever grant we receive in addition to the amount of money in the contract. So, in this extension, we are already giving them the amount that we get, which is little over $70,000, which is included in the $1,140. And then we're agreeing to pass through, Port Angeles to pass through to us.
So, we have increased compensation by 40 plus 13. And then that wasn't, I can't remember the original request. I thought our 40 was about half of what they had requested as an increase this year?
Well, the total amount that they asked for was a $90,000 increase. Yes, over the combined total. And it's not really a $90,000 increase over what our contract was. It was a $90,000 increase over the combined, which they would have no idea of knowing, the combined total expense in SWIM because they weren't doing SWIMs and in Port Angeles. And so, the combined of all of that was the $40,000 I had.
So, it almost sounds like a split. That's what I was thinking was.
Well, I mean, I suppose you could say that, but that's a pure and simple coincidence. What really happened was that, that I and Harry sat down and said, look, here's what I put in the budget. And I put it in the budget way before I knew what anybody's bid was going to be. I did know what we'd all spent on the previous year. And so, the deal was that in order to not have to do a budget emergency right after the first of the year, if we could come to a deal that would be equal to what we had in the budget, we could move forward from here and sign a contract and not have to go through any additional machinations. Now, in Harry's defense, quite frankly, he and I, or maybe my defense, he and I looked very, very closely over what his bid was and how it came to the extra $90,000. And quite frankly, he's going to lose money on this deal. And so, and that's why we have, because a couple of things that neither one of us had any awareness of mostly, the biggest single item for him was the increased cost of his, of his medical benefits. His medical package went way up. It went way up just the week of him putting in his presentation. His medical package went way up. It went way up just the week of him putting in his presentation. And it is, quite frankly, bigger than the entire, than the entire amount of extra money, just that one item all alone. So I think this was a very fair agreement. We have added some language in here at the bottom of the compensation that he and I are going to continue working on some small things, like maybe doing a shredding forum, see if we can add it to our contract with no extra expense to us. It saves him money. The same thing on the Westlaw connection. And we're looking for any way we can to trim his costs. And yet this is a contract that we both believe can be moved forward for next year. I see Harry is asking to come forward. But I think he was more than fair in his presentation.
Yeah, I want to address whether I was more than fair. That's your side. I said, I, well, I appreciate that. I'll answer any questions if I may, just by the way of background. The RFP that was put out asked for, can you come up with an amount for providing these services? So when I did that, I did that, here's how much it's going to cost. I don't care where the money comes from. So I didn't care whether it was from grants or from, or about past usage or whatever it is. It's, here's what I've worked out, here's how much we can, here's how much it's going to cost our agency to provide that service. So when we do our proposal, that's without, that's without regard to these grant amounts. We have addressed the grant amounts in previous contracts. And frankly, I think as much as anything, it was done as motivation to keep both the county and my agency in compliance with what had to be done for standards. So for example, technically to get, as you know, when a state provides money, it generally does that with strings. In this case, the strings are very legitimate, the strings. The strings were, we want to see that you are either in compliance with the standards that we're setting or that you are making progress towards compliance with the standards that have been set. That's why these grants, and Jim's been very generous in his description of the assistance that I provided in putting out those grants. Well, I've got a vested interest in helping do that because that's money to my, we set it up so that would be money to my agency.
I appreciate that.
So anyway, that was addressed on that. That's why, so I just want to be clear. We came in, here's what it's going to cost. The sourcing of the funding was not an issue. Wasn't phrased as an issue in the RFP. I did address that as an issue in my response to the RFP. So that's why we're playing it the way it did. In fact, at one moment, there was a point in time in fact where it wasn't recalled whether the county grant was actually included in the amount calculated. And for a few moments, for a few very happy moments, we actually thought that the proposal came in at about $40,000 less than the county actually had set aside for the services if you took into account the grant money. That didn't happen, but we did realize, Jim realized, I should say, that the Port Angeles money, which the City of Port Angeles had not distributed to the public defenders, at least not correctly, was routed through to the county under the consolidation agreement and had already been authorized. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Thanks for your contribution. Further questions, comments? Public Works Agreement for Purchase Advisement from the Swim Valley Center Block Homeowners Association for the Carlford Sewer Project.
Good morning. Notch in the long list of priorities for this project.
Any more to share, Paul?
I, I have a question. I'm going to dodge it and get back to you on it because.
Plenty of other people.
Joe is after I am.
Thank you. I'm going to, if I'm here, the majority of the board here, I'm going to abstain from voting on this tomorrow given the fact that I think this is Mark Smith's signature on here, so it's like a concern. He was a campaign contributor this last election. So I'll abstain just to keep the chairs as good here as far as conflicts and things go.
Is it the same numbers, all the rest of them?
Correct.
Same numbers.
All right. Two things for tomorrow. Thank you. No pork spare facilities or community development. Who's the order?
I have a question for Jim.
Yes.
And for Rob. So reported in yesterday's newspaper that, I'm speaking for myself, and how I publicly stated support for the SARC grant application. I'm curious where you got that because quite frankly, I've had private conversations with people in which I've expressed concern and questions. And there's a long process, so it makes me look in my liar, to my, so I don't believe you have a public statement of support. We've not talked about SARC support other than the $5,000 grant. Privately, I've expressed to you concerns and questions and throughout last year when it came forward. So I don't know if I'm missing a meeting in which I publicly stated support or is that a misquote?
No, that was, that was, when I saw that in the paper, it was actually not Rob. It was, it was.
Sorry, Rob. I got your room in the fall.
It was Paul. And Paul caught me and at a, coming out of one meeting and going into another one. And I had not yet heard, he informed me that the Opportunity Fund Advisory Board had approved and I hadn't yet heard that at the time. And he said, do you think it's going to be any problem? And I said, well, I said, I've spoken with two of the three commissioners and the one commissioner-elect. And all of them have expressed support, but I didn't say. No, no, I didn't. I didn't tell you. I said, two of the three existing commissioners and the commissioner-elect. I didn't list anybody by name. And so he said, so everybody supports it? And I said, well, you know, nobody's seen the amount of money, Paul. It was a lesser amount that had come in in like June or July. And so I said, you can't say anything official. And I said, the only thing I have official is a letter from Commissioner-elect Ozias saying that he is supportive of the new amount being asked and the reason for it. And I said, that's the only thing I have that's official. So it was probably miscommunication between me and Mark. And when I saw it this weekend with your name in it, I said, God, you know, I didn't say Commissioner Chapman. And I didn't disclose any private conversations to you, and I.
Because if you had this conversation privately, you do not have authors.
I do not to speak for you. I do not.
And members of media, Mr. Jones does speak for me. I appreciate him calling, clarifying his support. If he says I support something, but there's no public record that I supported. Because quite frankly, I've had multiple conversations with people privately in which I've expressed a number of concerns that I have before I walk through the process. So may I read that in the newspaper? Was I lying to them or was I lying publicly? And it's a really tough deal. So I'm just asking, clarifying. I, for elected officials, you need to ask, people need to ask them. And I just would appreciate, once again, if people ask, what were the commissioners? For gosh sakes, please, regardless of Commissioner Chapman, I refuse to speak because I've asked privately and now I have to speak to the public because it was public. And if it hadn't been for private conversations I had with people over the last few months. And this has been, this issue has been around for months. I've had dozens and dozens of conversations. And in every one of those conversations, I've expressed concerns for private organization in public funds, although they are municipal. You know, they're a junior taxing district. They're generaling and contracting to the Y. Where would it stop? How many other organizations are then going to ask? And as a boiler, it's a heating system. It is not a public infrastructure. The Woody Mitchell Memorial Full District would have loved to have had Opportunity Fund money. Instead, they went out and worked through the state process to borrow money at a low interest rate and go through the whole process. There's a whole process that Steve Burke at the rule has outlined on how you can get grant monies. You hire a person, they do an analysis to make sure you get the best system. So there's a whole process that, in my opinion, just throw in $750,000. Cuts out the state process to make sure that everything's within the standards and everything is within. And I know Steve's talked to them and there's money that they can borrow. There's a lot of things they can do. The public twice has now voted down a tax in that district. So for me, there's a lot of concerns also. It's not in next year's budget. So I didn't think we could just do it in January. Why would we do that again when we just went through a process? We had, there's a public meeting, there's budget emergencies, all of that that we just, so I'm just really confused. You made it sound like this was a slam dunk the second week in January.
It's not my intent. I apologize. Obviously it wasn't clear enough with you.
Well, you made it sound like you just thought everybody was on board with this and we're going to do it January 11. Where's the budget emergency process built in?
It won't require a lot because we have in the Opportunity Fund as ordered and recommended by the majority of the board, $1 million in undesignated projects, which by name, the SARC project was talked about as being one of those that is expected to be on the budget.
So anyway, I just want to clarify, although we had not stated support for this project.
I agree. I was disappointed when I saw that in the paper.
But I'm asking, do not, just leave me out of your conversations. Please do not mention anything. If they want to get my opinion, they need to call me.
Happy to do it.
Too many times. I'm reading about myself in the newspaper and I'm not comfortable with what I'm reading. So you talked about it. I've asked you multiple times. I don't, this isn't just something you can have this conversation.
I did not mention your name. I should have specifically, I didn't want to mention your name because of the conversations. I didn't mention your name.
We'll continue this conversation if you want to continue to argue.
I apologize. I said I wasn't clear enough. I'm sorry.
Do you want to argue or do you want to share what I have to say publicly so we can move on? Don't speak for me. Period. End of story. Enough said.
I agree.
And another issue though, that may be something that we want to consider in tomorrow's meeting. This is the word that came from the Trustlands Advisory Committee last Friday. So the requests that the committee has is that the commissioners consider increasing the committee membership from sixteen to a maximum of twenty by adding representatives from Sierra Club, Ottawa Society, City of Port Angeles, and Port Angeles Hospital.
Anyone have done before the next meeting?
That's what they're both want. And so what I was making is I've got three points here. I'm not sure if we can put this on the agenda for tomorrow because I am not sure what our requirements would be for advertising these vacancies, just to keep the process 100% clean.
Did they have people as well? Because that's what we would normally do. If you wanted to add, you would ask us to advertise and we'd go out and see who applied, who filled out the proper forms in order to be on the board and then you'd approve them at some date.
So I'm not sure that these people have.
Right. They'd have to, they'd have to get the notice from us that we're expanding and then they would get, Cindy would reach out to those four groups.
I think, I think, but just my, my view, and I'm not going to, you know, I recuse myself from the operations of how it's constituted and that kind of thing. I can speak on it. I think the best path is to get an official communication from the committee, amend the charter. We can take that up to the first meeting of the new year, advertise, get names, you know, the regular, regular order. So first step is to amend the charter upon what was maybe so I, I think that probably would be best done. They asked me whether there's.
They asked you if you're getting back on board. Did they?
Because they asked whether they needed to present anything formally. Rod Fleck is the secretary. Particulous notes could produce something on short notice. But I attended the meeting and they asked me if I would share this message. What I was thinking is that we could amend the resolution to identify the organizations.
Yeah.
As opposed to the person.
If we, if we agree, we could just amend, do a simple amendment to the charter and add these four additional positions. Or the resolution establishing, we could do that tomorrow.
You think what we can do is allow Cindy can go out and solicit?
Was it postponed?
No, that was.
Ken's here. The majority of your board, the board wanted to expand it.
That is correct.
I mean, is there any reason to think that by adding it to tomorrow's agenda would be upsetting anybody or?
I believe that was the committee's expectation that it would be addressed tomorrow.
Okay. And then there are two other issues. One is that the committee has asked me to report to the commissioners their request to change the date for the interim report to April 15th. And they're just now getting started. They believe that the previous, I can't remember if it was February or March. Anyway, the previous date had been identified as too tight. And rather than come to us with a interim report that says we're still working on it, they'd like a more meaningful date. And they proposed April 15th. And then finally, I have to, actually, yeah. That this is just a loose ending. You can advise me as to whether or not we need to include it in the resolution. I recall we did have a conversation about providing mileage to the members of the committee. And you recall that if we were to add anything else to the revision to the resolution, it would be that committee members will receive compensation for mileage. I'd like to make that clear because now we're starting to get a large number of people.
I think we have a large number of committees. I don't think we've done that. So yeah, we just look at it tiny quiet. We're going to start doing that.
To all committees?
Yeah. Because I don't think, how many are we paying for? I don't know. Port legalization gets a little bit of strike in their statutory. I don't think it's.
None of our advisory committees are currently being paid any mileage to attend.
Yeah. I remember we talked a little bit about that.
The only two, as you mentioned, board legalization and the Charter Review Committee itself.
What's that supposed to be?
And again, both of them are statutory. But, I mean, it's certainly nothing, the law does allow, we talked about this four or five years ago. The law does allow the commissioners, if they wish, to pay volunteers, which is what all these advisory committees are stipends. We have to go through a process and, you know, they have to turn in, sign things. Same thing we do with the Charter Review. But yeah, we have, I don't, dozens and dozens of committees with hundreds of people on them that we are not paying. And if you start paying one.
We have done a policy. So it's implemented across the board. We can't just sit around like this committee, we don't want to pay them. So we'd have to look at a policy. James, you look at the budgetary and that.
What was the decision criteria used on the Charter Review?
It's a mature body and a productive body and they have a budget.
Well, I think the Charter itself, I think the Charter itself that when the Charter Review Commission is constituted, you know, at whatever period it's called for, that we must, yeah, provisions, yeah, the county commissioners, I'm quoting from 11, 10, 30 for the Charter. The county commissioner shall provide to commission reasonable funds, facilities, and services appropriate to an elected county agency. Provisions for expenditure shall remain in the budget, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of written in the Charter.
So I'd like you to consider the fact that this is actually an extension of the conversation at the Charter Review. Please also consider, I misunderstood. I thought we had. I thought we had this conversation. Now, do you recall that there was a conversation about if we give this committee compensation, others, other committees should be considered?
Right.
So I was under the impression when I spoke to that committee on Friday that they would receive mileage compensation. And I'd ask you to take that under consideration. We've got a large group, it's actually, if you look at it, a cross section of professionals, you know, there's, there's a little horsepower at the table here.
I think you can say that across the board, the Port Al, the planning commission.
Yeah, we did.
So we need a vegetarian analysis. The other thing too is there's some, either, there's some of those complications to them. If you volunteer, you can.
My, my thinking has historically been for the boards and commissions that are statutorily required, planning commission, you know, there's several, agricultural commission, et cetera, et cetera. I think this kind of falls into that category of this, and as you said, it's kind of an option of the charter review commission. For the ones that are statutorily required, we may want to consider a policy change to say those individual members are going to get either a monthly stipend or mileage or administrative, the simple way to do it is just say you're going to get a monthly stipend, you know, whatever, whatever number that is. Because, you know, the ones that are must do kind of thing, the other ones that are discretionary are just that. You can have some discretionary. But I, I think that's a prob, that's probably a conversation that probably needs to take place next year.
Research, or researching what the counties do. I don't know. I think it's definitely difficult. You'd have to have a way to track why you're paying them. I don't know, probably looking at it.
Yeah, I think the idea of the compensation, like it's a hundred miles, a hundred and twenty miles round trip.
All these years ago, three people requested, the planning commission, and we've got one representative from the, my stand up to the Port Al. So they all could probably use the help.
Or that, that's my point. I would have a problem with it. I would like to make sure.
You know, the trail advisory committee users to go out and look at all of it. There's a lot of people that, that do a lot of travel. I'm not arguing for or against it. I'm just saying, if we pick some, I think it really, it really should be a good idea that we know why we're doing some and not why and not others.
So is this going to, well, the commitment that I've made to the committee that they'll get mileage? Are we going to turn this into something in January where we try to revise policy?
I think we have to. We have to have a consistent policy across the board, so.
So we'll address it immediately in January?
Yeah.
I'm thinking they're going to meet like the twenty second or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, we should be able to move through and figure out a policy and make it available. So I mean, but it's going to be, we'll see with the budget. We have an idea, we have a modified budget.
So I've got right now a language that says committee members will receive compensation for mileage. If I add it to that statement as per policy for mileage reimbursement, is this a document we can act on tomorrow? I mean, it will be subject to a revision to the policy on mileage. I'm trying to send a message back to this committee that we appreciate what they are doing and that we do want to keep the wheels turning. Because I still got a couple of weeks to go off to recruit for the candidates and finalize that. And I am committed to, by the time they meet next, they have.
Can you leverage that for any policy changes enacted for twenty sixteen?
Yes, just make it per policy.
If they can, we can invite the future board as to what policy to say. But we can certainly indicate.
Per policy.
For, for any policy changes enacted for twenty sixteen. Apparently, there's no policy that's been proposed. So obviously, they were not, they, you know, what I would say is a commitment to look at that policy change to be added for twenty sixteen, but it goes to Mary Ellen's work with the planning commission. I think we'd have to, part of policy would look through which ones were statute, which ones were, which one were just a group of people came together and, you know, blessed them. I'd like to share as advisory committee, we blessed. I mean, maybe, again, policy committee, I mean, any committee that board commissioner requests is simple. I'm willing to look at it. I just don't think, can't promise what policy will say.
Well, that'd be sweet.
Other counties are doing, there may be some legal notifications to check with HR, the risk pool.
So the other things we came out of the meeting, actually, the paper article Sunday covered pretty much what appeared there, but they did finalize the selection of the chair and vice chair and secretary, Joe Murray, Bob Lee and Rod Flack. And then they confirmed that they were going to meet on the third Friday of each month at noon. And a couple of minor housekeeping things, such as alternates, if identified, would be allowed and meetings can be taken by phone. Productive meeting, it took a fair amount of time to get started.
Did they announce that work plan that was presented?
What they ended up doing was the work plan in its entirety was not accepted. What they decided to do though was to tick out what they were going to accomplish in January and February, pretty much what was on the work plan. We gave them the flexibility as a committee to say, here's where we want to focus in March or April to meet. And you kind of think one of the issues that they're dealing with and they will deal with is the quantity of information that they need to be exposed to at any of the meetings. And I kind of got this undertone that, well, maybe if we don't get as far as we thought we were going to get in January and February, you know, we might have to reserve March for that. So I think that's a good product. We can, we can certainly take up the amended charter tomorrow.
Let's write the resolution that this is based on the issue from the three to the board of commissioners. Like we're just doing it. So you're indicating they, oh, did they actually vote on it?
They voted on the members and.
Expanded committee.
Yep. And actually, it's interesting, they included intentionally the use of the word maximum, changing from sixteen to a maximum of twenty. I think their message there was, yeah, we don't want to continue to do this. And then they did vote on the April fifteenth change in the deadline. They did not vote on the, on mileage. That was my error.
We'll work through a policy change. It's, it's probably time. What we need to just make sure we have the right policy, there's liability, sand for paying mileage, you know, that sort of thing.
It's actually easier and less problematic in my judgment with IRS to pay certified mileage than it is to pay a stipend. Stipend's a little more.
That's fine.
It has ten ninety nines and all that stuff where mileage doesn't. Because it's reimbursed for per IRS regulations.
Whichever the least cumbersome way is, is what I would be.
Mileage is less cumbersome than stipend.
For employees, a stipend is less cumbersome because we don't have to pay it for volunteers per the IRS regulations in my judgment.
And we did have it recorded and it was videotaped. But Ken, anything else that occurred that was in a part of the meeting that I haven't had a chance to brief the committee?
Well, as my understanding, we set the agenda for March also.
Oh, did we?
And, and that was going to be a discussion of rareage by the lawyer attorney types from various angles of that conversation. And then the committee is very concerned that there aren't going to be the one-year timeline. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, Ken, because I took notes, that January's meeting is related to education about the county's timberlands. February is focused on regulations, including the habitat conservation plan, and March is focused on a rareage and the trust plans mandate. One idea that is getting kicked around is we invited a couple of lawyers on both sides of the issue to speak to it and interact with the audience as opposed to, here's another report you can read. That's it for me.
A lot of work.
So you say, Ken, they don't think they can meet the one-year timeline?
I believe that there's a lot of concern in the committee already that that may not be doable. So they'd like to have some flexibility on that. Along, you already received requests for a extended timeline on the first report, I believe, so, yes.
Okay. Anything else? We've got a transit board, transit board meeting at one o'clock today, so we'll adjourn this week's meeting and reconvene for next week at ten o'clock tomorrow morning.